I want to thank the board members for coming tonight. I want to thank our audience for coming, citizens for being here tonight. I thought we would start the meeting by calling out all of the members and their names. And we'll start with the Board of Education. We'll start with Ben.
Ben, sir.
Robert Taylor.
Chris Phelps.
Mary Ann Road.
I'm Susan Bransfield for Selectmen.
Kathy Richards.
Ryan Curley.
Carl Chudzik.
Fred Naus.
Phil O'Reilly, Superintendent's floor.
And our recording secretary tonight is Sharon Hoy. This is a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education. It's a special joint meeting on Tuesday, September 23, 2014, at 7:30 PM. And we are in the Portland High School cafeteria. To get started and to just let you know some of the information that has been received, I am going to read the letter that was... There's two letters that were sent to me. And there are some questions there, some of which I think we'll be able to address tonight, some of which we may need to do more research on. But I think it's fair, since communications come in to me in the First Selectmen's office, that I'm able to share it and perhaps provide some information as well. This is dated September 8th, and it's, Dear Miss Bransfield, Municipal Employees Independent Union is sending you this letter with the hope of gaining answers and equality. Last year, the Supervisors and Clerical Library Bargaining Group and the Library Bargaining Group negotiated with the Town of Portland. During those negotiations, both groups accepted below-market settlements to preserve the good working relationship we have with the Town of Portland. We were informed the Town of Portland continued to struggle financially, and we took that into consideration when making our decision. At the time, we were very displeased with the fact that a Board of Education employee within the Town of Portland received a significant salary adjustment, but were assured the Town of Portland had no prior knowledge of the adjustment and could not or chose not to fight with the Board of Education over stopping the adjustment. Recently, the union was informed that this was not a one-time adjustment. The same employee received another significant adjustment this year. The previous employee working in the same capacity for the Town... For the... Excuse me. For the Portland Board of Education worked there for many years and was highly regarded within her field. To have a replacement with significantly less experience make almost double the previous salary seems wrong. Although you met with the Municipal Employees Independent Union over this Portland Board of Education action, this action has raised some serious concerns that need to be formally addressed. When the Town of Portland's non-Board of Education employees accepted a year of no general wage increases, did this free up the funds for the Portland Board of Education to provide this adjustment? This Portland Board of Education position has now received a $20,000 raise in consecutive years. Is there more to come? The Municipal Employees Union Independent requests a copy of whatever paperwork exists detailing when and for how long these adjustments were promised. Why was this position not posted with the proper salary and duties? As happy as the Portland Board of Education is with the incumbent employee, there may be current Town of Portland employees or highly qualified taxpayers with equal or better qualifications who the Town of Portland missed the opportunity to hire due to a lack of transparency about the pay of the position. This is not the first time the Board of Education has not been forthright over the pay of its positions. The accounts payable position had a wide-moving potential salary range at the time when it was open as well. What can be done for more transparency when a vacancy is filled within the Town of Portland? In tough economic times, how can the Town of Portland justify giving one employee such a significant raise? That same money could be spread out to provide our entire bargaining units over a 4% yearly raise. It is undeniable that there was a better way, that money could have been distributed within the Town of Portland. No members of our bargaining unit have ever received such a significant raise. In fact, our most senior bargaining unit members cannot recall any position in the Town of Portland ever receiving anything close to this adjustment. Who paid for the employee to become a Certified Business Manager? And how much did that training cost? In November 2013, Gail Petito passed the Connecticut Certified Municipal Assessor Exam, and more recently Cheryl Cream was certified in municipal tax collection. The Town of Portland is receiving a large benefit from these two employees' increased qualifications, just as the Portland Board of Education is, over a Certified Business Manager. There is a huge discrepancy between how the three employees were treated. What can be done about those two employees' pay? What duties were taken away from other Town of Portland employees doing Board of Education work when the Board created this new position? Does a current job description exist for this position? Some of our members do Portland Board of Education financial work. Why have they not received any adjustments? The union feels very strongly that our members doing Portland Board of Education work should receive adjustments as well. The expense of those adjustments should be passed along to the Portland Board of Education budget. When the town police settled their labor contract and took a zero, it was publicized in the Middletown Press. When our members took one, it was not. The first adjustment of this position received no publicity. This one has. What can be done to have issues treated more openly and equally in the future? Is the Town fully aware of the disgruntlement the adjustments have caused? The Municipal Employees Independent Union realizes that you may not possess answers to some of these questions. But as the Town of Portland's First Selectwoman, we trust you can acquire those answers in a timely manner. The Municipal Employees Independent Union is currently reviewing all our options over this matter and look forward to the Town of Portland's responses to our questions. Thank you for your consideration with this matter. And it's signed sincerely, Theo Haresco, Municipal Employees Union Independent Staff The second letter that was distributed tonight is addressed to the Town's Labor Attorney, who's Joseph McQuade, and it was provided to me. I believe I received this either yesterday or today. It's dated September 19. Recently, the members of Local 2693N became aware of two significant wage increases for a Board of Education employee. Although it was an uphill battle with our members, the union agreed to take a 0% increase in the first year of our collective bargaining agreement. As you are aware, we are the only union who took a true zero, and this was our second zero since the economic recession. Nevertheless, the union made this concession for the purposes of maintaining our rapport with the Town and accepted the representations that the Town did not have the finances to support an increase in the first year of the agreement. The union is disheartened at the fact that the Town gave such significant wage increases to a Board of Education employee. Spread across Local 2693N, these wage increases could have resulted in a percentage increase for many rather than a significant increase for one. If the Town is not in fact in the economic position it portrayed to the union, please contact me at your earliest convenience to renegotiate the true zero for the 2013-2014 contract year. I would hope that the Town is as interested in the union in maintaining goodwill and a positive working relationship. And this is signed by Kelly Rommel, Staff Attorney. She's part of Ask Me Council 15 and specifically representing the Portland Police Union. So I read those because they are shared with the full board. And as I said earlier, some questions, I think, will be addressed tonight, and there may be a need for additional research or getting information. And I also thought that in terms of the agenda, the Business Manager Hiring and Compensation Procedures is the item on the agenda. And at the time that the position was thoroughly discussed by the Board of Education and voted on, Chris Phelps was the chairman at the time. And I think that knowing Chris, I know that he can provide us with some information as to how the position was researched and determined by the full board in terms of its going forward. So I think that if you're prepared, Chris?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. So, yeah, and so for both board members, and I'll... Actually, we have some members of our board who weren't members of the board at the time. I'll just walk through the process here and try not to be too long-winded about it. Probably starting about, what, about two, maybe even a little bit more than two years ago, the Board of Education was looking at the business operations and the structure within our Board of Education offices for managing the business operations and financial management of the operations of the district. We had, for many years, as I think you referenced earlier, Susan, operated with, in essence, a two-person structure, the Superintendent of Schools and an Administrative Business Assistant working in the office, assisting the Superintendent. And so, a large part of the very myriad functions of managing what has become a $19 million a year school district operations with a couple of hundred employees roughly, was on the shoulders... On the shoulders of the Superintendent of Schools. And we saw as a board... We saw as a board that one of the things that that was doing was really stretching our Superintendent in a lot of different directions, having to take on a lot of tasks that frankly, we were growing concerned were taking away from the core educational functions and leadership functions of the Superintendent of Schools in a district. And we were, unlike a lot of our districts, operating without a Certified School District Business Manager. And so, we looked at what it would take to create a Business Manager position for the district. And actually, I have the job description of the old Administrative Assistant here and the job description of the School Business Manager. And just a couple... Just looking at the job description, a couple of distinctions that I think... And I think this was actually one of the questions asked by one of the union representatives in that letter. So this is part of the answer we've got. We can provide the documentation for you. The Administrative Assistant position previously had a couple of qualifications that were required. One was a high school diploma and three years of work experience. And then it... Actually, I found this rather odd reading it, in all honesty. It said we preferred that they had computer knowledge. So a little bit of an outdated job description at the time. But those were the fundamental job qualifications. And then the job goal, the overall mission of the job, was to assist the Superintendent in the management of the business affairs of the district going forward. So to provide that backup assistance. It was data entry, preparation of reports, and et cetera. And frankly, over the years that I've been on the board, we were very lucky to have people in this position who frankly exceeded those qualifications, to say the least, and really wonderful... Two, in particular, wonderful people. But that was not the job description of a School District Manager by any stretch. The School Business Manager's position, to give a little bit more of a flavor of distinction in terms of job functions, is, first of all, the qualifications require a master's degree and then with a major in business management and administration. I'm reading this from our job description. As well as, and this is a state law, requires certification, the 085 Connecticut School Business Manager Certification. That is required for any School District employee who is going to have management oversight of these various... Of the various functions. Those are the kind of two big qualification differences. And then the job responsibilities, the Business Manager is responsible for management of the district's business and financial functions, food service contracts, purchasing programs, vendor relationships and contracts, procurement, human resources, supervision of facilities and transportation functions, and staff, auditing, et cetera. So one of the differences, just in the job function, is this person has actual management and supervisory oversight over Board of Ed employees that an Administrative Assistant would not.
That was currently on Sally's...
I'm sorry?
That was currently under Sally's responsibility.
Right, yeah. And so previously, everything that flew out of... Floated out of those job responsibilities and areas of responsibility were under the... Were responsibilities that were covered by the Superintendent of Schools in addition to the Superintendent's educational leadership responsibilities and functions. And so when we were going through this analysis a couple of years ago, you know, we identified, you know, the Business Manager position, and we made the decision to create the Business Manager's position, you know, and effective with the 2013-2014 year, last year. In that process, one of the things we did was, of course, we looked at the financial impact to our budget, because we receive a set amount of money from the Board of Selectmen, and it's our responsibility to work with that amount of money and not come back to you and say, hey, we need a few... Some more money for this function or that. And when... In looking at the salaries of Business Managers in school districts around... In our neighboring districts and around the region, we settled on a number of about $100,000. I know in the last school year, the East Hampton School District, I believe their Business Manager was paid roughly $105,000 or $106,000, for example. And in Cromwell, it was a little bit more than that, maybe $107,000, $108,000, to give you a bit of an example. And so in terms of the process, once we determined that really we had grown to the point in our... And everything from federal mandates, et cetera, had increased the responsibilities involved here to the point where we needed to hire a Certified Business Manager qualified to do that, we were faced with a decision. What we chose to do a year ago as a board was create the Business Manager's position and eliminate the Administrative Assistance position, rather than add another position on top of the Administrative Assistant. And so we were faced with two options. One would have been to hire a new Business Manager at $100,000 a year last year. Or we had option B, which was available to us because the person we'd hired a couple of years previously as our Administrative Assistant actually was, in all candor, overqualified for the job. She met the educational requirements and the work experience requirements to be a Certified School Business Administrator. And so we made the choice as a board to offer that person a promotion into that position, knowing that the Administrative Assistant position was being eliminated and et cetera. One of the things that that allowed us to do was to frankly phase in, over two fiscal years, the salary impact within our budget of the differential between the Administrative Assistance job and the Business Manager's job, in a nutshell. And that's what we ultimately decided as a board to do. That was, you know, that was the process. We created the position and appointed the Business Manager to that job in June, I believe it was, of 2013. And then processed this year, the second, you know, or approved this year the second year of the pay increase that went with that promotion, in a nutshell. And so to, I guess, indirectly answer one of the questions I think was posed to one of those letters was, this was the last part of that change in salary associated with the change in the position. So I think I covered most of the process. I don't think I missed anything there.
You want to add anything?
No, not with regard to that. I think that, you know, some of the things that got raised in the letters are things that we, as a board, are aware of. One of the things that we just spoke about at our last meeting was the need for us to review all of our policies and procedures and begin to work through updating them. As you can imagine, it's riveting work, so we're dying to get into it. But we've made a commitment that that be our first priority with our new Superintendent coming in to help us with some fresh eyes and some fresh ideas and some much-needed updating. Sometimes in the desire to work towards letting our children in the school district achieve great things, some of the more mundane tasks go by the wayside. And I think that perhaps this is a reminder to us that those tasks of policies being looked at and reviewed and understood and updated as needed is something that we need to set aside particular time for, so.
Actually, if you mind if I add something on that?
Not at all.
Because it's something I meant to mention earlier that's on this point, is that, you know, part of the process of implementing this position was that in our budget proposal to you, Susan, back in January, February of 2013, for the last fiscal year, as we do every year, we included a list of, you know, kind of larger changes in appropriate... In our proposed appropriations at that time. And one of the things we identified was the creation of the Business Manager position. And for that proposed fiscal year, what was effectively $20,000 salary impact in that budget. But one thing, and this just gets to what Mary Ann was saying, that I, in looking back over this process, have... Would be readily acknowledged, is that we dropped the ball this year in not including that same bullet point in this year's budget to call out for your indication that this year we were going to be implementing, you know, the second phase of that transition. We should have done that back in January and February. We would have had this conversation back then, but I think it would have been a little bit more transparent and frankly, a little bit more of a timely conversation to have at that time, for what it's worth. So that's a clear error on our part.
Definitely.
Bob, did you have anything?
No.
Ben?
Yeah, obviously, I don't think it's good when board members sit up here and disagree. And I'm not necessarily saying I disagree with the whole process, but I don't remember the process being exactly the same way. What I remember, a year or so ago, when we decided to go to the Business Manager position, that it was a large increase from $60,000 to $80,000. And I believe I probably asked the most questions in the room on whose job was giving up some of these tasks and who... Why she was gaining them and what exactly they were. And I struggled going from the 60 to 80, and I understood the mandates and I, at the time, I got on board. But I do not ever recall there ever being a second portion of this going from 80 to 100. And if the minutes reflect differently, I'd like to know. But that was never part of anything that I heard or recall. And I've spoken with another board member, and I think their recollection was similar. But regardless, I never knew there was a second portion from... Let's face it, 60 to 80 was a big jump. And I understood that she did go above and beyond and did get... And so, I get all that. But then to go from, just a year later, to go from 80 to 100, for the record, I was not at that meeting and nor was I... I informed this was going to occur prior to that meeting. No, I would not have voted to go from 80 to 100. So I have no problem saying that. That's my position, Susan.
Thanks, Ben. I'll move on to the Board of Selectmen. We'll start with Fred, see if there's any questions at this point.
Yeah, I think in terms of... In terms of the Board of Selectmen, there's a perception here that's created some, I think, some difficulties for everybody because of the way the process worked. Certainly, I think the people who negotiated, the various unions that negotiated, I think in many cases negotiated and recognized that one of the things we try to do in Portland is keep our taxes as affordable as possible. And they were, in terms of the contracts that were worked out, I think they were very fair contracts, and I think they... The unions generally reflected the philosophy of the Town in terms of trying to hold the tax rate down. And I understand their frustration now, and I think it's due to the process. I think if it were more transparent and open, we would probably... We might not be here. But they're frustrated, and I can appreciate why. They're... If you take a zero pay increase and then you see one employee getting a large increase, you're going to be dissatisfied. You're going to have questions. So I understand that. And that's all I have to say about... I think the process really has to be looked at. And I think you acknowledge that, and you're going to do that. So that's the only point I wanted to make at this time. Carl?
I wanted to hear a little more before I make any judgments and so forth. I think it's counterproductive to what we, as a board, try to do in... Through our budgetary, we work very, very hard, looking at saving money wherever we can, being the most efficient. And I don't see us slipping this greatly on a step where some other people at the board don't remember. I think I have to listen more and hear more details before I make any further comment.
Did you have any questions, Carl? Or additional information that you... No?
No, it'll come out, I'm sure.
Okay. Ryan?
I have a few comments. First of all, the Cromwell budget, which you compared us to, is actually $27.5 million. That's 8.5 million more, 40% increase roughly. Yet you compare the two towns. I don't think it's fair to compare Cromwell with Portland. We're not the same town. $19 million you speak of is the current budget, but if you adjust that for inflation over the years, is the impact the same? Because really, how many kids are in the school system now that we're in 10 years ago or 20 years ago? I believe it's remained relatively flat. So as far as that goes, the amount of work that I see would be relatively the same. So saying that the budget went up really doesn't mean that much when all our budgets go up constantly. I'd also like to know more specifically where exactly the funds for this came from. I don't think that, you know, when we voted for... When we approved this budget and you, as a board, came to the Board of Selectmen and said, we need more money, you know, I'm under the impression that it's going to be spent on books, on teachers, on sports and music, and not go to, you know, some position that frankly, I don't see the need for so far. Town Charter also states that the Director of Finance is ultimately responsible for all departments in the Town. And I don't know why he's not involved more with this. I think that Tom does an excellent job for us, and I think that he does a lot for the Board of Education as well. And I'd like to know what responsibilities have changed since this promotion from Tom to the newly created Business Manager. Basically, what do you get for 40 extra grand a year? You know, I'd like to see that mapped out as well. I'd also like the Board of Education to think about what kind of message this has sent to the Town and sent to the Board. It tells me that, you know, we don't really care about our other employees and that it shows favoritism. And like you said before about dropping the ball, every year, the Board of Selectmen get to pack it. And we have many highlighted things from the Board of Education mentioning what is going on in that current year as far as changes. And $20,000 extra this year is a pretty significant thing to just simply forget. And also kind of convenient. What else do I have here? Reviewing the policies and procedures shouldn't be riveting work. It should be, you know, your job, you know, as a board, I think. We need to hold ourselves to higher standards than this. I really believe that, you know, you said it, we dropped the ball. And I don't know. I have a lot more questions, but I'll defer.
You're doing a great job. Thank you. I would just like to ask, when the job was advertised, it was advertised at $60,000 in the job description was put out that you first mentioned. Now, when the job went to the $80,000, the reason was because this employee had gotten a certification, and that's what justified the increase? I'm just trying to get this timeline and the reasoning.
The job, the original job of Assistant, I mean Administrative Business Assistant, was advertised at 60-ish. I don't have the exact figures.
Okay.
When we eliminated that... And we filled that job. When we eliminated that position, we created a Business Manager. When we eliminated that position, we created a business manager position.
Okay.
Which we promoted the business assistant into for a salary of $100,000 to be done over the course of two years.
So, she accepted that job at $100,000, but we were just not aware of that.
And, you know, it was two plus years ago, and I am missing a, a part of our memory here because we don't have our superintendent here.
Mm-hmm.
So, do I wish that I had every single date and conversation documented? Yes, I do. I don't.
Okay.
So, that's what I can tell you. I understand that Mr. Serb doesn't recall this. There's nothing that I can sit here and say to people other than we had conversations about this, we had agreements within the Board of Education. It should have been noted on the budget. Mr. Curly, I appreciate your comments. I certainly meant no disrespect when I said riveting. As a volunteer, I do the best I can.
Thank you.
She mentioned that I couldn't.
Um, Ben, yes, go ahead.
She mentioned that I couldn't recall. It's not that I can't recall, $100,000 was never brought up at that meeting, period. I struggled from 60 to 80.
Actually, Ben, you weren't at that meeting. It was on August 5th, I believe?
No, no. That was the 80 to 100.
This year.
That was the 80 to 100, and you're right, I was not there. Did not vote on this, would not have voted on this. When we went from 60 to 80 and created this position, I was there, and the discussion was very clear on what job Sally was giving up, what things she used to do, and the things that our business manager was now gonna pick up, and I believe I said, "Sally, are you giving up any money?" Because you're obviously giving up some of the tasks you're doing. These were the type of discussions we had in that meeting. Having said that, the discussions were based on 60 to 80. I was never informed that this was gonna go to 100. Had I been, I, I wouldn't have even been on board for the 60 to 80, even though an employee had gone through all the degrees and, you know, all the points were brought up that the, the district now needed this position, fine, but I was not aware that it was ever going from 80 to 100, to be perfectly clear. So, it wasn't that I don't recall. I just wanna, I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure that I'm clear on that.
I wanted to take a, a moment to go through the, some of the accomplishments this position has provided to the Board of Education because Mr. Curly asked about it, and so, I'm gonna take a moment to go through some of those.
Could we hold for just a, and ask if Kathy has anything?
I'm sorry.
Because she did have a floor.
Kathy?
I'm fine. Go ahead, Mary.
Under the accomplishments for 13, 14 fiscal year, Medicaid reimbursements, coordinate with third-party vendors to implement reporting to maximize Medicare reimbursement. In 2010, 11, we received $8,040 from final reporting. In 2011, 12, we received $18,675 from final reporting. In 2012, 13, we received $3,370, and in 2013, 14, we received $7,125. This was all income that had not been realized prior to this position coming into play, because there just wasn't time for our superintendent to focus on Medicaid reimbursement. Under excess cost calculations, self-educated allowable costs for state and federal funding, educated staff on need to document needed services in individualized education program in order to be allowable costs. Implement system to track costs and to report on, created worksheets to track costs for reporting, reimbursement, and audit. Cost analysis of in-district services to create standard rates for services, transportation, support services to be used to include in-state and federal funding reimbursement reports and billing for out-of-district students. Past practice did not include internal cost in reporting. Transportation. Analysis of in-house transportation of students that included route stop locations, stop restrictions, student special transportation needs and vehicle restrictions. Analysis of in-house transportation costs that included personnel costs, vehicle operation costs. Research of alternative solutions to in-house transportation, including cost analysis, asset utilization, staff and opportunity considerations. Implementation of outsourcing, outplaced student transportation, reassignment of staff, backup drivers for retained routes. Automation of IEPs. Self-educated basic requirements, service description, services to be included for cost reporting, standardizations of descriptions. An identified vendor initiated demo, coordinated staff, review of program, reviewed proposals, managed steps to implementation. Under contracts, food service management, researched alternative vendors, managed bid process to include state compliance, issued, issue requests for proposals, walk-through screening of bid responses. Oh, the walk-through and the screening of bid responses. Crafted a contract to comply with state requirements, negotiated terms, included point of purchase in contract implemented, implementation to be completed in 2014, 15. Under union contracts, participated in negotiations for custodial secretaries, nurses, and administrators. Impact analysis on health plans, time off with pay, salary, and step increases and other bargaining issues. Implemented standardization of contract. Special education consultants, standardized contract language, created invoice template for consultant vendors, implemented and monitored approval process for contracts. Under request for proposal, created specific specifications, managed distribution, walkthroughs, opening, and award of bid for the filtration system and for the minibus, or minibus. Technology upgrades, managed funding of infrastructure and equipment purchases from five different funding sources, ensuring full utilization of funds and compliance with funding sources, being open choice, gildersleeves, state bonding, Ryan Fund, and BOE. Reported as required by funding source, managed purchases to comply with town bid purchasing requirements, coordinated with curriculum and technology department for smooth implementation, coordinate with town to coordinate fiber installation and funding to best meet the needs of the town and the Board of Education economically. Compliance with state and federal mandates under the Affordable Care Act, understand the implement, implement implications, educate town and BOE payroll and benefit staff, coordinate with healthcare provider procedures to comply to include measurement, administration, and stability periods. Develop means to record employees' hours to assure compliance and negotiate union contracts to avoid full Cadillac tax. Uniform chart of accounts, monitored and anticipate requirements for continuously changing state mandates on the implementation of State of Connecticut standardized charts for accounts of, for financial reporting. There are two more pages. I could go on, and I will if you'd like me to, or I could stop.
It's up to the board if they wanna hear more. Board of Selectmen?
That's fine. Additionally, Mr. Curly responded to the comparison of us to Cromwell. We also did a salary comparison within our DURG, and there were several that were at or above what we were offering our business manager. There were some that were below.
And there are many that don't have this position at all as well.
Ben?
And I think, I think our business manager does a lot. I don't think that's what we're sitting here discussing. I think it's more.
That was a question on the table.
Well, I think it's more, how did we get to this point? And, and perfect example, like the first one you read, was that, it was right around the first, it was something to do with a Medicaid reimbursement, couple thousand one year, $7,000 another, so on and so on. And then you, you add at the end that these are things that Sally overlooked or didn't get us essentially, correct?
That's not what I said.
What were your exact words?
I don't remember my exact words.
Okay, what was your, what was your gist?
My, my statement was that this was unrealized income.
Okay. And had that ever come to my attention now, even now, and that's one of the reasons I'm bringing it up, or during this process, if there is something that an employee is supposed to be doing and not doing, obviously, if, if Philip had to do something and wasn't doing it, we'd all be talking to him. And if this is something Sally should have been retaining and hadn't been, well, then we should discuss it. Why weren't you? Okay, I wasn't aware. We'll start doing it, that simple. Not necessarily create a whole new position. These are the things that, if, if they are gonna get brought up after the fact, and this is obviously, I heard this since then, the Medicaid reimbursement, but I, I didn't necessarily know we weren't getting it prior to that. And these are the examples that if there were tasks that should have been done by our superintendent and she just couldn't at the time, well, then I think we should have discussed it at the time. If these are tasks that are now being done by somebody else, well, maybe our new superintendent could be doing them. So, I'm not convinced that, that we went down the right road, so.
Well, those are discussions certainly for Board of Education to proceed with and to pursue. I think that in, in much of this matter, there's been concerns about, as we put on our agenda, the hiring and compensation procedures. In my time as being for Selectmen, there's many decisions that we have to make, most of which we make in a public venue, and discussion is had, some of which we've talked about tonight, and then votes are taken. And there's rules that we have to follow. And there's not just rules that are made up by the Board of Selectmen or by the Board of Education. There's rules in terms of labor laws, there's rules in terms of our town charter, and there's just general procedures and the way of doing our jobs that we follow. And in this particular matter, and I've had this conversation, at least with the chairman and the vice chairman at the time, or called the secretary, and the superintendent at the time, is that when there's a new position created, there's a need for public posting, and there's a need for people to have the opportunity to compete for a new position, particularly one that involves additional responsibilities of a substantial nature, which I think you've read, and of a substantial compensation nature. $20,000 on a $60,000 salary is substantial increase for duties. Now, I'm not arguing that these business manager positions exist, and they do exist at these various salary levels. What I am arguing is that when there's a new position made, it is posted, there's appropriate competition and vetting of the applicants, as was done, I would argue, for the business assistant position. The Board of Education, very correctly, put it in the papers, put it, I'm sure, throughout the schools, that the position was available, and there were people that applied, and the most qualified person was put into the position. What happened with the break in that procedure is when the business manager position was, again, vetted by the board, put into the budget, people discussed it. That's not the issue. The issue was that the board voted to put a current employee into that position. And I believe that as we go forward as a town, and we are one, it is Board of Education and the town that work together to run this town, among many of you in the audience that also either work for the town or serve on boards and commissions. And we need to make sure that these procedures are followed, and it wasn't in this case. Added to that, this past August, I frankly was at my desk one day and was told totally out of the blue that we were processing a payroll change, and that payroll change was due, again, to a vote by the Board of Selectmen, I mean, excuse me, by the Board of Education, that one position would have an increase of $20,000 for that year. And I was shocked, frankly, that that kind of money was being given to one employee. And it had been passed by the Board of Education. Some of you may know, you may not know, that the first Selectmen doesn't have authority once the dollars are given to the Board of Education. The process is, a number is put forward, the Board of Selectmen votes on the budget, and that is voted by you, the voters in the town, and then that budget is what is given to the Board of Education. And that's state law. My concern is that these procedures were not followed, that it had been, up to this point, as far as I know, adhered to, and it, I don't know why that happened. I hear what you're saying, but I, I'm, I'm very serious concerns with this. And I have to also say that I negotiate the contracts for general government, and I negotiate them in good faith. We sign off between the unions and the town, good faith efforts at negotiations. And when we negotiated most recently, I am very appreciative and very honored to serve with the employees in our unions. And they all cooperated, the ones that, that we have signed agreements with, to take essentially a 0%, the second year between 1.5 and 1.75, another union took 2%. And in the second year, one union is 1.5, another is 1.75, and the other union is, I believe, 2, and then the last year it's 2.5. So, the increases that we have approved are very modest and very minimal, and they're bargained in good faith. And, and someone said a few minutes ago that these actions show perhaps that we don't care for our other employees, and that is not true. I must vehemently say that is not the case, and that there is deep respect for all of our employees and all the volunteers, including all that sit up here, for the work that's done by the town. I believe there was, procedures were not followed in, in the manner they have been, and I have a lot of concerns about that. And I also, again, must say that I respect all of the employees that serve the town and serve it well, and that we must have transparency with the dollars that are given to us by the federal government, the state government, and local taxes. I take this job very seriously, and every dollar that is given to the town, under my control and under the control of these board members, must be followed in terms of all state laws and local laws. So, this is a serious matter that I think is very healthy that we're talking about this, and that as we proceed, what do we do? How do we manage our town appropriately, openly, with transparency? I don't have the answers tonight, and I think it was Carl who said he needs to hear more discussion. I don't know whether there's a need for more discussion at this level, or whether we now open it up for public.
I have one more question.
Okay.
I just wanna know, when Ben said before that he doesn't remember voting for this, it was because he wasn't there at the meeting in August. However, he was there, and so was the rest of the board in July on the 8th. According to your minutes, where this was on the agenda, you had your full board present, and you voted to remove it from the agenda. And I'd like to know why you didn't want this voted on when the full board was there.
In July of this year?
Yes, you can go back to your minutes.
I, I believe, and folks are gonna have to remind me of this if, if I'm remembering incorrectly, but at the time, we actually had a question at the time of whether or not we had already acted to approve this formally, or whether it was in essence a redundant action. So, we held it over and specifically said we were gonna take action as part of, in July, we said, "We're gonna hold and come back and specifically take action on this."
Do you think it would have passed?
In our, in our, I'm sorry?
Do you think it would have passed if Ben, as he said, was there?
We weren't at, we, we, we removed it from the agenda at the beginning of the meeting because we were not ready to act on it, because we had not.
Because we thought we had already acted on it.
Yeah, in a nutshell, we had to clarify the, the issue.
If I may, that brings up a perfect point. Had the original meeting discussed 60 to 100, or a two-part, 60, 80, 80, 80, 80, eighty to a hundred, we wouldn't have been voting on it again. It was sixty to eighty, and I struggled with that one. It was never, it was never eighty to a hundred after that. Had it been at that meeting and Ben voted that way, there would have never been a second vote, so.
Thank you. Carl? Fred? Kathy? Marion?
I just have one thing, it's responding a little bit to something you said earlier, Susan, that stuck with me, or just a few minutes ago. And it just relates to, it gets back to the processes you were talking about in 2013, and the fact that we created a new position, eliminated the old position, and promoted the incumbent employee into the position, rather than post the business manager position and such. And, you know, I fully, you know, get all the points and agree with a lot of what you were just saying. But I wanted to maybe illuminate for you a little bit of the thought process as we, as a board, were going through a year and a half, two years ago now, what have you, now, when we made this decision. And it was as much as anything out of respect to our employee, because, you know, the process that you're suggesting, that we might have, the alternative process we could have followed, would have been to tell our existing employee, "We're laying you off, but we're creating a business manager because we're eliminating your position, and we're creating a business manager position with significantly expanded job responsibilities. And we're laying you off, but you're free to apply for that job, which you're completely qualified to do." We could have done that. And that was something this board talked about, actually, going back to 2000, early 2013, in our budget process. But ultimately, we decided to take, you know, the other course of action. You know, those were the two options available to us, once we had decided to eliminate the business assistant and instead create a business manager's position. Should we have done it the other way? You know, in hindsight, I don't know. One of the, as I mentioned earlier, one of the factors that, and I know we have some difference of opinion about the content of our debates at some of these meetings, but for me, one of the deciding factors was the knowledge that if we phased it in over two years, we would be able to better manage the appropriation we received from the Board of Selectmen in the budget impact, within our budget, because this isn't new money we're talking about. But that was, you know, part of the debate, and maybe it was an incorrect path to take. It's one of the things I think we will look at in terms of just our policies on how we post jobs going forward. Because no, that I'm aware of particular state statute governing this specific question, but certainly we want to endeavor to, you know, pursue best practices going forward.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Beth?
If I could just add, I'm not convinced there ever would have been a layoff. If this position is so important, which we all acknowledge, the sixty thousand dollar position was very important, I believe what would have happened following what Susan's saying is then a position would have been posted, a start date of X. The other position would not have been eliminated, because it's obviously an important position. That person would have kept their job, and this person would have been more than welcome to apply for the new position. So essentially, had they won the new position, there never would have been a layoff. If the layoff ever did occur, it would have occurred because they didn't win the new position. So, there wouldn't necessarily have been a layoff, is what I'm trying to point out.
Unfortunately, so...
We're not, she's saying a different thing there.
Okay.
Yeah, and unfortunately, these things happen. Sometimes people can be laid off fairly. And I think one of the letters, and it's something that we must constantly be vigilant about, is equality within how we do our work. And I note that there were no comments from employees that are non-union that I received, and there were no comments that I received from the Board of Education unions. And I'm not privy to all of the negotiating that goes on with the Board of Education employees, but I, again, it goes to equality and trying to spend hard-earned tax dollars in an appropriate and equitable way. And I have a lot of concerns for this process. And I think that evidenced by the number of people that are here listening, they may as well. The other issue that I think Ryan touched on, and we talked about it at a Board of Selectmen's meeting, is how finances are managed within our town. And within our charter, the way it is written is that the Director of Finance has oversight for all finances, including the way finances are expended within the Board of Education as well as general town government. And that's probably a topic for another night, as to how we are adhering to our charter, how that will be evolved as this process goes on, because this is a major change that has occurred. The other issue that I think the selectmen are going to have to certainly look at is there was called a realignment of salary for one position, that, and I don't know that you've had realignment of salaries for other positions, but that was what was stated in the Board of Education motion, most recently, this past August, is that there was a realignment of the salary, and that's the way the motion was passed. It wasn't passed as a second part of an agreement. So, again, it's curious as to what realignment means, and does that mean that every position? I mean, that begs the question of every position in terms of realignment, because when you realign one position, traditionally you look at the entire operation of a town, or of a company, or of an entity. We're not a corporation, we are a municipal government, and the way we manage things is, again, and I know that this word has been used, we have to continually use it in a transparent fashion. For certain decisions in this town, everybody has a vote. And in a town meeting form of government, everybody has a right to speak and to have a vote on many, many, many issues. And we're not going to lose sight of that, because that's the way Portland operates. So, this issue of realignment is something that I want to have some more discussion on, versus an agreement that, again, all agreements should be filed with the town clerk. All of the union agreements are on file, on record, for people who are members of the town and members of the public can review. So, if there is an agreement between the non-union employees and the Board of Education, those need to be on record with the town clerk. If that's the case, then there would be no question in terms of the dollars, because it would have been written in the agreement. Now, I don't know if it was a verbal agreement, or if it was a written agreement. But again, that goes to transparency and the ability for anyone who lives in this town, participates, owns property, registered voter, to be able to know what is happening in the town. And that's the way we run the town. And that's why I think we're able to have a very civil discourse and a very good conversation about this matter, and how we manage going forward. So, if there's no further discussion at this point, yes, Fred?
Thanks just for the public comment, but I just had that one request. It would be, I think, helpful, at least to me, to see what the new job description, you started reading through, what that person is supposed to be doing and accomplishing. And having a look at that, it would be helpful to me, at least, to try to get a better handle on exactly what the savings might be, perhaps, as a result of the tasks that this person would handle.
And in fact, Fred, before my time as being first selectman, there was a review of all positions within the town, not the Board of Education, but within the general town government. And there was a review of all of those job descriptions, as well as, I would presume, how the compensation occurs. Now, again, within the unions, we have contracts with our members, but with non-union personnel, we don't have contracts. We have a pay plan in general government that we pass every year after the budget is passed. So, it's transparent. You know what the range of salary is. If you want to know the exact salary, we'll tell you. So, this begs a lot of questions as to how things are moving ahead. Anything else, Carl, or, okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment, and the way we manage public comment is to go, this worked, excuse me, this worked pretty well the other night. And what I'm going to do is ask if there's any public in the first row on this side that would like to make comment. If not, we'll move to the second row. What we ask you to do is state your name and address for Sharon.
Allison Lucas, 605 Main Street. And I apologize if I didn't quite catch this, but it sounded as if the position was posted and it was open and people interviewed, but then from some of the other comments, it sounded as if you decided she would be the best person, and you put her into that role.
So, you're asking for some clarification?
Yes.
Chris, do you want to address that?
I mean, I know typically, public comment, we don't, but I'd be happy to respond, because that is a good point of clarification.
Yeah, it's a point of clarification.
All right. Yeah, so, no, that's not quite accurate, and so I want to make sure I make it clear. What was being referenced earlier was, and I'm not going to remember the exact year we did this, but a few years ago, the person who had been for many years working as our administrative business assistant retired from that job, or left the job, and so that job became open. And I don't remember, any board members remember exactly what year that was off the top of your heads?
I don't.
Put you on, you weren't here, so. But so, anyway, long story short, what was being referenced was, we posted that administrative assistant at that time and hired.
As a vacant position.
And then it was in a subsequent year, last year, that we then were moving towards, and we created the business manager's position. And then when we created the business manager position, as we talked about earlier, we created the position and, in essence, promoted the former assistant into that job. It was not posted publicly for a business manager, no, to be clear.
And I just have to say as a comment, that's kind of a nice little bump up. I went from not managing to managing with no increase. And you have to kind of prove that you can do the job, and even though a position might have a range, from where you're starting at, it doesn't warrant jumping up twenty and then another twenty thousand dollars. So, I was kind of curious, there might be somebody else more qualified, but you didn't open it up to find out. And then, does the person who's in that role, does she have a master's? Does she meet all of the requirements that you listed?
We have to be careful not to talk about individuals.
Okay.
But I don't really want to comment about individuals. The position is, the description is available with the qualifications.
But she checks off, like, if you were to go down and everything that you listed for that role...
We can't give you specific, we can't...
Okay, well, that would just be one of mine.
Okay.
You might have been able to find someone, but, okay.
Certainly, the qualifications for the position and the position description. I haven't read it, but I understand it's available, and we can make that available to everyone.
So, then I assume there's probably no letter of offer, job offer, that went out and said, "You're going to have this salary, and we'll do two increases over this time period"?
Well, that was a question that I had in terms of a written agreement versus perhaps a verbal agreement, and...
Because that's kind of nice to bank on, that somebody's going to give you that extra twenty and then another twenty the following year, and trust that that will happen.
Right.
So, I'm just saying...
It's a legitimate question, absolutely. And I don't know that we have an answer tonight.
Okay, well, this is my first time coming, thank you.
Well, we're glad you came, welcome. Anyone else in the second row? Third row. Gail is first.
Gail Petito, 36 Belavista Heights. As a taxpayer in town, I do have questions about the job going out to somebody without anybody else interviewing. And also, as a taxpayer, listening to the accomplishments, that sounds great. As a town employee, I find it very hard to believe all those accomplishments were done without the help of our wonderful finance department. And that's all.
Thank you, Gail.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in that row? Then we'll go to you. Jan.
Janet Ellsworth, 62 Riverview Street. This is really hard, but, as a taxpayer in Portland, I believe that a good town has a good educational system. The educational budget is most of our town budget and should be spent improving our system, not creating unnecessary jobs. The choice of the school board to create a position that clearly was not needed, as we already have a finance director that has been responsible for this, not Tom, but over the years, Tom now?
And Tom.
Tom now, but it's a misuse of our taxes and not in the best interest of our town or our children. This new position does not enhance the educational system, it takes away from it. The monies could have been used to update books, add to our curriculum, replace aging technology, or maybe hire a teacher. The choice by the Board of Ed has long-term ramifications, as every year forward, this forty thousand dollar raise in salary will not be used for the kids, but rather for an ill-conceived, unnecessary position. In ten years, that will total four hundred thousand dollars that was taken from the students. It should have been used for the students.
Thank you, Janet.
Lynn Gildersleeve, 238 Cox Road. I considered whether to speak tonight, because my children have already gone through the Portland school system. But I remember quite well the cost of their education, a field trip here, an enrichment opportunity there, sports events, music concerts, educational enrichments that offered further growth to their road to adulthood. None of this was inexpensive, and yet today, we are looking at a forty thousand dollar raise that has been earmarked for one individual. I am extremely disappointed in the Board of Education members who were involved in this poor decision-making. I voted in good faith that my tax dollar would be used wisely, and it was not. This board has failed in their responsibilities to the children, teachers, parents, and taxpayers of Portland. While my voice is just one of many tonight, and its message will probably soon be forgotten, come election time, my vote will be registered loud and clear, seeking new board members who will speak for the schools.
We're still in the fourth row. Anyone else in that row? We'll go to the next row, fifth row. The next row, six.
He's not that bad.
Seventh row. The next row. And so forth to the back of the room. Does anyone else like to speak on this side of the room? And we'll go to the, under the clock group. Anyone in that area there? I can't see everyone. Anyone else on this side? I guess that's it for public comment. Bernie?
As a town clerk of our town for thirty-seven years, I am very disappointed in the Board of Education and their actions. All job listings, any new positions created, have to be posted. They have to be posted in the office of the town clerk on the board, and I know they are first open to the people that are employees in the town. They have the first chance to apply for these jobs. But if there is not anyone qualified to apply for these jobs that are created, then it goes out to public, and that's when you bring in the people and they are all interviewed. So, I can believe that our Board of Education, the people that we voted for and supported and thought they were the best people that we had in the town, could do this to us, the taxpayers of the town of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Are there any other comments tonight? Okay, we're going to close the meeting, and it is, just for... Okay, we're going to close the meeting, and it is, just for the recording secretary, eight forty. Thank you, good night.